The time is now five thirty-three on December nineteenth. So we will call the finance subcommittee meeting to order and we'll go ahead and get started. Um, I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. And once um it's your item, just say who you are for those who may not know and um. That way we'll know, but we'll get started with the, let me see, let me get the schedule expenditure report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Patrick Byrne, City Controller. Tonight I will be presenting the November revenue expenditure report. To the city council. This encompasses the first five months of fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Uh, one of the highlights of November is the yearly education incentive payment. That the city makes to the Springfield Police Department this year's. Expense total three million, one hundred and three thousand ninety-eight dollars and seventy-one cents.
Three million. Wait, where is that at, Pat?
Uh, it's within the police department section of the report, so you'll see that. They're actually at forty-four percent, but that's because of this large yearly payment that we make every November. Um, for their education incentive known as the Quinn bill.
Oh, Quinn bill, yeah, okay. I do see that. Let me just see, is there any other one that sticks out? Um, the state district assessment seventy-eight percent?
Yes, that's our.
Oh, no, that's the pension, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, sorry, I was looking at the wrong line. Yeah, we're under. In revenue because of the property taxes, maybe?
Uh, we're a little bit over at this point. And that's due to the property taxes being at forty-seven percent. And also just the fact that our state aid is such a big part of the budget, that always comes in. Right where it should uh at this point of the fiscal year, so we should be, it's should be at about forty-two percent. Yeah, forty, we're at forty-four, so.
All right, well, that's good. Any questions from councillors?
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Pat, I have a question about the Quinn bill. I I thought that the uh contributions to the Quinn bill were reduced or. Eliminated or changed. Uh, do we still? Pay out as much for the educational piece?
Uh, the newer officers only receive half of what the the uh. Existing officers did, so they've they've reduced that, but. At one point, the state matched the payment at fifty percent and they stopped doing that, so. Now the city's responsible for a hundred percent of the payment, so. That was factored into the new hires that we could only. Support half of what was done before.
Is there ever any discussion of the state revisiting that and helping with the uh Quinn bill?
We tried, even when the control board was here, we tried and. Basically, it's an unfunded mandate now for the city.
Okay, and how many of those do we have? We still have a lot of them?
Yes, quite a few.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, seeing now we'll move on to the FY twenty-three Shannon CSI grant. Um, one million, two hundred and one thousand, five hundred, fourteen dollars and eight cents. Is there anyone here to speak to that?
Sure, I um I can introduce the order. We do have Sergeant Benoit here from the police department to speak to the Shannon Grant. Um, so this is our annual Shannon funding, um, one point two million dollars. And the Shannon is a multi-pronged approach safety initiative to address gang and youth violence. In the community um through the use of five strategy areas. Being social intervention, suppression, opportunity provision, organi- organizational change and community mobilization.
Can you um just clarify um how much of that goes to suppression? And what neighborhoods it targets, if you have it, or Sergeant Benoit, if you know?
I don't have that breakdown.
Uh, yes, good evening. This is Sergeant Benoit, Springfield Police Department. Um, based on the current allotments, um, it's approximately three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Um, which is overtime for the police department. Um, that's spread out throughout the city, all of our units, the C three units, Metro. Squad Detective Bureau, firearms investigation unit. Along with uh the Quebec unit, our school squad unit, all have allotments within that budget for that.
Oh, thank you. Um, how much goes to the community organizations?
I have that, um, let me see. Seven hundred, just over seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Okay, so um if we could get a list of the community organizations, I think we got it. When they were first awarded, but if you could resend that. That'd be great because we will be inviting them back to the finance subcommittee meeting just to see. Um, what they're doing with the funds that they get to reduce the um. Gang violence in the area, um. Yeah, we we want to know what they're doing with the funds. I think some of the organizations didn't make it last year. So I'll be glad to know what they're doing, so if you could send that list, that'd be great.
Sure.
Any other questions for on the Shannon Grant?
Yeah, um, I I have one.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Are there any new organizations that are funded this year through the Shannon Grant? I know it's typically a lot of the same organizations receive the grants.
Um, I don't know if Sergeant Benoit knows if there's anything new. I'm happy to list the partners. I don't know if any are new.
Okay, that'd be good.
Want me to tell you what they are?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's great.
Um Salvation Army, Martin Luther King Junior Family Services, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, Give Music Inc. YWCA, South End Community Center, Boys and Girls Club Family Center, The Mission Inc. Shoot Hoops C three, Greater New Life, New North Citizens Council, and Springfield Youth Athletics.
Which C three?
It says Shoot Hoops C three.
Oh, Shoot Hoops three, C three, okay.
Yeah, it'd be great to have a copy of that.
Yep, I can send that, sure.
Thank you.
I think that music one is new, um.
That's what it sounded like.
Yeah, I didn't hear of that one before, and I know Shoot Hoops is a newer um. Initiative as well, so I think those are the two that I hear is new for this year. Um, any other question, councillor Walsh?
Or comments? Not right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, this is Sergeant Sergeant Benoit. I was just gonna speak on that. Um. The Give Music and Shoot Hoops are returning. I believe they were new last year for FY twenty-two. Um, so they are returning, but I don't believe there are any new ones for this year.
Okay, and the application process usually comes out when, in October-ish?
Um, what we have here is uh September sixteenth, the RFP was posted with responses due by October seventh.
And how many responses did you receive?
Um, I believe everyone on the list here, uh, there was, I don't, no one got cut out from it, so the ones that were listed, so on.
Now, if. Okay, all of them are producing the data that they're supposed to? If they're not, do they get cut out, like? Do you know?
So I've been working with Sean Pham on that, and we are trying to. Uh, refine the data collection and actually implement um additional. Check-ins with the um, the the partners, because the state has a. Bi-annual and annual reporting, so it's hard to get a snapshot of what they're actually doing. So we're going to increase that, I believe, with the partners to at least quarterly, so that we can monitor throughout the year. On their performance and then reevaluate that at the end.
Okay, thank you. Um, councillor Allen?
Yeah, Sergeant Benoit, could you just say, who co- do you coordinate? Excuse me, do you coordinate this throughout the year?
So, with uh Shannon, I am the partner representative for the police department. So I'm in charge of the programmatic approval for the deployments with the various units and the tracking of PD data. But I am not the Shannon Grant Coordinator, so I don't have the overall with the partners.
You coordinate the police department's part of it?
Correct.
So when you get three hundred and thirty-nine thousand or whatever it was you got, you keep track of that kind of thing, make sure it's changed that way.
The the department of finance tracks the funding. I do the programmatic in regards to. Making sure that the deployments meet the criteria for for Shannon Grant.
Good, um, well, in keeping with that, there's always another, there's for years, there's been another grant that comes. That provokes the same quest, evokes the same questions in us, uh, from us. And it's called this um Safe and. Safe and sec, yeah, I'm not getting it, Safe and Sustainable Youth Initiative or something like that, if you know what I'm talking about?
I I am familiar with that, but I don't have any role with that grant.
In the, all right, and you know if it's similar to this grant?
I'm not sure of the parameters on that grant.
You know, Lindsay?
You know, off the top of my head, I don't want to say what programs are supported under SSYI. Um, I don't know off the top of my head either.
I think most of it goes to ROKA though, Safe and Successful Youth Initiative?
Correct, yeah, it's SSYI, and off the top of my head, I just can't speak to exactly what the programming is there. Um, I have notes with me every meeting, so I don't have notes on that.
Okay, well, we, can you please send that to us so on councillor Allen could have that, the details behind that grant as well?
Sure.
Thank you. There was a time, uh Sergeant, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Um, there was a time uh when Brian Elliott was kind of in charge of both. And he would come to the meeting, you know, year in and year out, and uh is he still involved in it or is he in a new role?
So Lieutenant Elliott is in a new role. Um, that was back when he was in the Grant Department or the Police Department. Um, so he had his hand in all that stuff. Uh, we no longer have a police representative for grants at the PD. So I was tasked with the partner portion of Shannon. Uh, specifically for the police department, so that's all I have access to.
Okay, thank you.
Not a problem.
Alan, um, the only name I'm not familiar with on here is Carl. Carl, can you just let us know who you are?
I'm on the retirement board for Springfield Retirement.
Thank you. Um, councillor Hurst?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just was hopeful that we might be able to get a breakdown from. Last year to this year, just to see if there are any uh individuals or organizations that. Uh, had their money reduced, and if so, uh, we'd be able to see where it was allocated to. Is that possible, Lindsay?
Sure, I'll send you what we had from last year and I'll send you what we have from this year.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions on Shannon Grant? All right, thank you. We'll move to the next item on the agenda. FY twenty-three State Aid to Public Library for four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, fifty-nine dollars.
Hi, Molly Fory, uh Director of the Springfield Library. Um, good evening, Madam Chair. This funding is from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. Um, uh, the the uh, in order to receive the funding. Uh, libraries have to be in compliance with state standards, so we apply every year. Um, we fill out our financial report and our compliance um. Report and we are in compliance with all state standards, so. The amount of money determined is uh per capita and formulas, so um, we um. Spend the funding on a variety of things, personal services, uh substitute librarians. Uh, computer equipment, some facility upgrades, um, so if you have any questions.
No questions here, self-explanatory.
Thanks, Molly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is Brownfield Assessment Grant, a hundred thousand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brian Connors, Planning and Economic Development. Um, this was a uh grant that we applied for through the Commonwealth's. Uh, One Stop for Growth Program. This is for environmental site assessment. Uh, of a sixteen-acre site in Indian Orchard, the former Crane Property. Um, to find out uh the environmental status of the property so we can move it towards redevelopment.
Awesomeness. Um, what type of properties can be developed there if all the soil is good?
Yeah, I mean, it's the the history over there is a pretty significant environmental contamination, so uh we've been able to. Move some of the property towards solar redevelopment. Um, on this particular property. Uh, there is a carved-out parcel that's already been redeveloped for the Wellspring, Wellspring Greenhouse. They've indicated an interest in ex, yes, absolutely, they've indicated an interest in expanding. Uh, and really were um part of the inspiration for us applying for this grant because they're interested in going on to this property. Uh, with some more uh, some more of their activities.
That's awesome. As former board chair, Wellspring, that's like good news. Thank you. Any questions for uh Brian? All right, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
You're welcome. FY twenty-three Fighter Fire Safety Equipment Grant, forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Good morning, or good evening councillor, BJ Calvey, Springfield Fire Department. This is a grant that comes through the Department of Fire Services to aid fire departments in purchasing uh protective equipment.
Self-explanatory, once again, any, any questions? I see you.
Yeah, yeah, I I guess I have a lot of questions tonight because I finally got my voice back.
All right.
Sir, um, how much, how long does protective equipment last? Do this a lot, or?
Uh, well, protective equi- it depends what type of the protective equipment you're talking about. Turnout gear uh lasts an average of ten years. Uh, this is not what we're using that money for. We have a line item in our budget every year where we replace fifty sets of turnout gear annually. To keep a rotation going, so each member of the department has two in-service sets to enable us to launder the gear. To help uh reduce the threat, the risk of cancer to the members. We're using this gear, this money to upgrade. Our SCBA system, we're finishing a project. Where we're changing our SCBA bottles from thirty-minute to forty-five-minute cylinders, and we're using a portion of it to buy. Uh, a couple new thermal imaging cameras through the modern technology.
Why, why did you say cancer? Did the, does the equipment cause cancer?
No, we're washing the ac- everybody has two sets of gear so we can help limit cancer exposure.
Oh.
Every fire we go to, we're exposed to ca- carcinogens, so. Firefighters have a a four-time higher risk of cancer than it does the general population. So we do do that in an effort to help reduce cancer threat.
Yeah, do they, do um, do the firemen have to purchase their own uniforms or just do you give them to them?
Well, we purchase those.
Okay, all right, thank you. Learned something I didn't know tonight.
I don't either.
Hope they all stay safe.
Me too. Good to know. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Um, turf program grant, ten thousand dollars.
Thank you, councillor. This grant is a ten thousand dollar grant for the Emergency Communications Department Dispatch. Um, and the uh Springfield Dispatch employee was recently named. As the Assistant Lead for the Western Mass TERT team, and the TERT team is the Telecommunicator Emergency Response Task Force. Um, and this ten thousand dollars is reimbursement for training.
And any questions? No question. Thank you. We have a Parks Department donation to the Riverfront Park, two thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Thank you, um. This is from Develop Springfield, and the funding has already been received. And it's for use at Riverfront Park for improvement and maintenance.
Thank you. Elder Affair Donation Two Thousand.
Yes, this is from Country Bank, um. Not intended for any specific purpose, and. That's it, from Country Bank.
Order approved an increase of retirement board member annual stipend to forty-five hundred.
I can handle this one. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. This order was before the council, I believe in October, and it was sent to committee. This is. A order authorizing the stipend to be raised from its current level of three thousand dollars a year to forty-five hundred dollars. Um, this is.
Per retirement board member?
Yes, for the uh five board members, which um. Some are on the, on the meeting today, uh. The chairman, Bob Moynihan, um, member Haskell Kennedy and member Carl Schmalsy.
Councillor Walsh?
I just want to say that at the meeting tonight, I'm going to support this, and I think this is another example of. How fortunate the city of Springfield is. I mean, I've heard. Many of my colleagues say this, how lucky we are to have so many people that come forward and help out the city, and I do believe. Bob, that there are many members on your board that have been enjoying this for quite a long time. So I think this is overdue and warranted, and I, I hope all my colleagues support it.
Thank you, councillor Walsh, can we just?
Merry Christmas.
How many years you all have been um serving on the board? Uh, Mr. Kennedy? Oh, you're muted, Mr. Kennedy.
Care of that?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Haskell Kennedy. I've been a uh, the appointed member. Of the city's retirement board since uh two thousand and nine. And I've seen significant rebound uh from the hard work of the committee members. Uh, there's so many things to go into that I, that probably most of you know in terms of how the city. Ended up in the position that it's in, uh, but we are finally uh seeing the light at the end of the tunnel.
Awesome. Can we hear from the board chair? You're muted too, sorry.
Okay, ma'am, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I've, I've been a uh, I'm the chair of the uh retirement board this year. And I've been a member of the uh board since two thousand and seven. I'm one of the elected members, and uh we have uh. Tried very hard to work with the city, and also uh because of the fact we have to have uh training through our uh. The overseeing body of PARAC, every year we have to uh make sure that we have certain amount of training. We have to travel to that. And also to uh make sure that we are up to date on all the. Chapter thirty-two laws and and uh, we, we believe that we have not asked for this, this increase for. Uh, since it was initiated, so uh we're, we're hoping that the, the city council will support this uh. Increase for us, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your service and um, Carl, I don't want to mess up your last name, so. Sorry. How long have you been a member?
There we go. Um, I just been recent- recently appointed. Um, in August, I believe it was of twenty twenty-one. Uh, to replace a longstanding uh fine person before me. Um, but I have also served on another retirement board since two thousand and one.
All right, well, we thank you all for your service and your hard work, um, you know, attending the meetings, going to the trainings. With everything else going up in inflation, I, I, I also, like councillor Walsh, will support um. This increase because, you know, time is money. We gotta realize that time is money. And we value your time, and we want you to know that you are valued um members to the retirement board, so I too will support. Um, this increase. Councillor Allen and councillor Perez? Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, um, I guess that everybody probably knows I've been a big advocate of the pension. Um, in my time on the council and keeping current funding levels and improving current funding levels as. As Haskell Kennedy just mentioned, and these guys have had a tough, tough job being uh as funded as poorly as we were, so. Thank you to all of you, and I'll be supporting this as well. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Allen. Councillor Perez?
Yes, I'm also, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm also in support, um, being in a war for so long and being so faithful and going to. Certification with this stipend only, I am in support of, of, because I know the work that they do. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you councillor Perez, so looks like you guys got a lot of support already, so um. We're, we're hopeful that this, this will pass, and you definitely deserve it, and thank you for your um service to the city of Springfield. Okay, item number ten, budget transfer across departments, thirty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-one cents.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this is a transfer from the Reserve for Contingency Account to the Retirement Account. And this is for a payment. That the city owes to buy back credible service for a fire lieutenant. Who was activated for military service several times between two thousand and three and two thousand and eighteen. And this will put the money in the Military Service Fund and allow the lieutenant to retire.
Good for the lieutenant, um, any questions on that? Glad he stayed safe after all the deployments and, you know, I know councillor Walsh is happy to hear that.
I am, I'm glad to see that that's working.
Yep.
Hoorah!
All right, so no questions there. Um, Mass Work Infrastructure Grant, seven hundred thousand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this is again uh an application that the city put in through the. Community One Stop for Growth Program that the state has each year. Uh, this is through the Mass Works Program of that. Uh, this funding will be used for design of uh Central Street roadway design. Uh, streetscape improvements, green state, green space improvements. Um, as part of the plan that we've been developing since twenty twenty with the neighborhood Armory Quadrangle. Uh, as well as uh the City Council Economic Development Subcommittee. Um, so this is the first big step into implementing that plan with, uh, this is just for design. Once we're done with design. We'd have to go back for uh construction funding.
Seven hundred thousand just for design, I'm in the wrong field. So Central Street, the whole, all of Central Street?
Chestnut, so it's Chestnut Street. Yeah, basically Harrison. Um, to Liberty, so kind of around where Afrimont Triangle is uh right down to Liberty Street.
Okay, I think they deserve some green space over there too, so that's a good um project. Any questions from councillors on that? All right, um, councillor Perez?
Yeah, um, I'm also in support of this project. It's well-needed, well-needed, and I, you know, um. There's some parts in the city that have been waiting for so long. And this part of Chestnut Way to Liberty is one in the list, so I'm in support of this project. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councillor Perez. It looks like um that's the last item on the agenda, and we pretty much supported everything, so I'm gonna make a motion. That we support all the items that are listed on this finan- It looks like um, that's the last item on the agenda, and we pretty much supported everything, so I'm gonna make a motion that we support all the items that are listed on this Finance Committee. Um, agenda for today. Um, so can we have a motion? You're muted, Counselor. I'm gonna second it. And um. So we are in support. Um. Oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, so we are in support, Counselor Hurst.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Maybe if you can highlight that at the beginning of the meeting, uh, and make that abundantly clear, uh, may. It might help to expedite uh some of these items.
I will highlight it during the report outside session, and um, we gotta move through these items so fast. Uh.
Thank you.
Just, just, just kidding.
We're moving right along. All of them.
Somebody's ready for the holiday.
Definitely ready. I would raise my hand first. To uh do the report out.
No subcommittee needed tonight, please.
Definitely appreciate it. So I just wanna wish all of you who attended. Happy holidays, um, enjoy the time off with your families, and just like. You know, wusa, don't think about any work or anything like that, just enjoy this time because we we need to, and um. Counselor Walsh, you know you're in my prayers, and I know this is your first holiday season without, um. You know, Dan, um, definitely praying for you on that.
Thank you.
Okay, well, meeting is adjourned, guys.
Right.
Have a good one.
All right, happy holidays to everybody.
All right, take care.
Bye-bye.